Anytime.
Yeah.
Ta-da.
There we go. Alrighty, we will call the Falkir County School Board meeting to order and at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Mitchell if she would be listening in.
Okay.
In fudge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and Ms. Callahan, if you would please take the roll. And at this time, is there...
Madam Chair, I move that the school board adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion and a second that the school board adopt the agenda as written. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, and the motion carries, and we will move to announcements. There will be an FHS renovation advisory committee meeting Wednesday, January 23rd, at 6:00 PM in the school administration conference room. There will be a finance committee meeting Monday, January 28th, at 5:00 PM in the school administration budget office. Chairman's night is Monday, January 28th, at...is that correct? Y'all are meeting at 5:00?
We're meeting at 5:00.
Okay. And chairman's night is at 5:00 in the school administration conference room. There will be a school board work session on Monday, January 28th, at 6:00 PM in the school administration conference room. There will be a health advisory committee meeting Wednesday, February 6th, at 8:00 AM in Central Complex Meeting Room. There will be special education advisory committee meeting Wednesday, February 6th, at 5:30 PM in the Central Complex Meeting Room A. The school support council will meet Thursday, February 7th, at 7:00 PM in the school administration conference room. And the next regular school board meeting is Monday, February 11th, at 7:00 PM here in the Warren Green Building.
And Madam Chair, I would like to add, just in case people are looking at agendas online, the Mountain Vista Governor's School meeting is not on Thursday, this coming Thursday. It will be on Friday. There is a meeting and planning session scheduled for Friday morning, starting Friday morning, and it's being held at Keller's Ford.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Got it, thank you. At this time, we will move to citizens' time. The school board appreciates public input, however, due to time constraints, citizens' time is not a time for dialogue. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Matters relating to personnel or personnel issues should not be discussed. The school board welcomes the public's comments and believes community involvement is an important component of a successful school division. And we will start, if you would please, when I call your name, come to the podium, give us your name and magisterial district, and we will start with Thelma Massey.
Good evening, my name is Thelma Massey, and I live in the Lee District, and I'm speaking tonight as a citizen, an employee, and a member of the Falkir Education Association. And one of the things that I wanted to talk to you about tonight is continuing contract. We are hearing lots about continuing contract in the news. I'm sure you've heard many of the same things. And I know that VEA has put forth a resolution letter that you may have seen already. If you haven't, I'm sure that our president will be sharing it with you soon. And most people, when they are employed as a teacher, which I am, currently, I am an early childhood special ed teacher. I am a referral slash resource teacher, which means I take in all the referrals for preschoolers with special education needs, and then also do inclusion services for Head Start and do some home-based services. So I am in a teacher role right now. In my previous job in Smith County, where I came from just this past year, I was an administrator. So one of the things that I wanted to talk about was continuing contract, but looking at it not through just as a teacher, but looking through it a lens of an administrator as well as through student achievement. Because I think that is where some of these issues that we're going to be talking about come into play. I think that if changes are made to continuing contract, that we will be losing teachers to other states who have continuing contract. And I do believe that it will lead to lower teacher morale, because none of us like to live in uncertainty, and that is what I think we will have if we have major changes. And basically, I wanted to tell you about a study which was presented in 2011. It was presented at the Center for Longitudinal Data in Educational Research. The title of the study was "How Teacher Turnover Harmed Student Achievement." And the study was done by Matthew Rodfeldt of the University of Michigan, Susannah Loeb of Stanford University, and Jim Wyckoff at UVA. And basically, what they concluded was that when students are taught by teachers in the same grade level team in the same school, when there is a high degree of teacher turnover, for whatever reason, that student achievement does decrease. And they saw this in big schools, small schools. It especially seemed to really make a difference in schools with low socioeconomic status and schools that were already at risk. When there were lots of teacher turnover, it seemed that student achievement would drop for a while. And one of the things that we need to think about is...I'm sorry, that I didn't get as far as I wanted.
So you can, if you got it...
Finish up your...
I just have some notes.
Oh, okay.
I just have some notes.
You can email it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Or you can give me.
Okay, I will...how about if I email them to you?
Yeah.
Could you also, Thelma?
Yes.
Ms. Massey, could you also email us a link to that study?
Right, yes, I sure can.
That'd be interesting.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Jacobs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Margaret Jacobs, and I have been a Falkir County public school teacher for 34 and a half years. I am a Falkir resident, and I live in Lee District. I'm also an executive board member of the Falkir Education Association. I chose to teach in Falkir County for several reasons. First and foremost, this is my home, and I wanted to give back to the system where I was educated. Even though our salaries were not commensurate with the surrounding Northern Virginia counties, benefits seemed to ease that lower salary rate. As time passed, we saw our benefits decrease, but our salaries had not increased at the same rate. The county no longer pays for the master's programs for teachers, and teachers are extremely limited in their choice of courses to take for recertification if they're not able to pay for a class that's not specifically offered here in the county. And for those of us, especially elementary teachers, we have additional duties such as the content council members, department heads, et cetera. The stipends have been removed from them when we have to travel, and we assume those extra duties without any compensation. Most teachers can no longer afford to pay for extra classroom materials that are no longer provided by the school system, like paper, printer ink, and those kinds of things. There's been a reduction in attendance of educational conferences because of their affordability and the registration fees, the travel, and the lodging, et cetera. Many teachers have been priced out of their preferred healthcare plans because of the 20% increase in rates. Also, many of us, highly qualified seasoned veteran teachers, who would hope to retire in the next few years, can't see that in their future. The E-RIP program, which offered retiring teachers a way to ease the cost of health insurance, has been terminated. With these kinds of benefits rapidly being discontinued, excellent teachers are being forced to look to other counties for employment or to take on second and third jobs to make ends meet. I respectfully ask that you consider increasing our pay and recouping these lost benefits when you're setting your budgetary priorities. Falkir County needs to attract as well as retain the highest qualified teachers and support personnel. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynette Westerhoff.
I'm going to just tag along on what she's just got through saying.
Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, Lynette Westerhoff, and I'm representing FEA. I spoke with you last month, and I'm just kind of reiterating the same concepts that I spoke about. We no longer have the E-RIP program, and many people cannot afford to retire, who would like to retire. So I'm asking that you please consider some type of retirement incentive for your seasoned teachers. It would also help save the county money, because new teachers would be getting less of a salary. So I think that program would pretty much fund itself if you were to do it. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Lynelle Hilling.
My name is Lynelle Hilling, and I'm the librarian and a teacher at Marshall Middle School, which is in the Marshall District, and I'm also a member of the VEA. And so tonight, I wanted to speak with you and ask that you perhaps look at a program which would save, could save, a great deal of money, encourage large numbers of efficiencies, and really contribute to stock morale. And this is all at a time when money is at a premium and expenses are high. And so my idea is for us to take on what Southwest Airlines and as well as the state of Virginia do, which is something called an employee suggestion program. And how this works, I mean, the most famous case is actually Southwest Airlines, where they have their employees, they have like a suggestion incentive, and they have a bonus to it, but I would argue that at this time, you wouldn't even need the bonus. But what happens is that employees see things, they see efficiency gains that could happen within the company, and they have an open channel to propose those efficiency gains. Now, they're not suggestions. It would have to be far more complex. You would see an efficiency gain, then you would have a plan for it, not like a five-point plan, but you would definitely have a plan for it, how you could execute it, and then the research behind it, and then you would be able to contribute that to a vast clearinghouse, well, like a downtown clearinghouse. And here's my reason. Like I said, I'm up in Marshall, which is brilliant. I love the North, but it's very far removed. It is. We are so far removed. We work on a, we're a middle school that works on an elementary school schedule. I can barely make it to any, you know, middle school meetings. It's just we don't have the time nor the capacity to really...I have a brilliant idea, or one of my competitors has a brilliant idea at another middle school, or an efficiency gain that would save me hours and hours and hours of time, but I don't get to find out about it. It's difficult for me, because again, we are separated by such great distance, and we're also separated by time. Where efficiency gains that we could have, well, that are very common in large corporations, you know, our defense contractors here. They're in enormous buildings, and everyone's working together, but we don't have that ability. We don't work together. We work in all these different various, you know, locations. And it's simply that there are some amazing efficiency gains that we could be making and some ways that we could save a great deal of money, and then obviously, hopefully have pay raises, but that we could do that, but it's difficult for us to put those forward, because again, we're so separated from one another. So my idea and my proposal, and I will send you the research, Harvard actually, last year, in 2012, conducted a study, the five key indicators for employee incentive programs, and I'd be happy to email you those. But again, it would be that we have an employee suggestion program implemented by the county itself for employees. And I would suggest we start small, with something like employee suggestions related to technology, and how we could have efficiency gains in that area. So just a simple idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Pat Baker.
No, we're going to start right now.
Start now.
We've already started.
Drop the pan. Ding. Just kidding. Just kidding.
I didn't hear, so it's okay. And by the way, that retirement incentive, I'm Pat Baker, I'm president of the FEA, and you could get rid of me with a really nice incentive program, which we all need. Just to go back, there are so many issues that probably don't cost money and probably would aid so much in the morale. Our surveys, year after year after year, show the majority of your schools, the vast majority of your schools, are perfectly happy, the way things are, what they are, where they're going, their administration, everything is fine. But question number 30 always is, morale is horrible. And you wonder, if everything is fine in the schools, and all of the other questions are fine, how do you get an across-the-board low morale? And it really doesn't have anything to do with people. I think people are basically friendly and happy and kind to each other, but it has to do with year after year after year, for the past five or six years, not getting a salary. And at first, we really believed we were frozen, but we were, we were more than frozen. We actually fell in, because our salary scale went backwards. If you look at the 2008 salary guide at a master's at 30, and then come back five to the sixth year, when we got a 2% increase, we are still making $1,000 less than the MA scale on the 2008 salary guide. So we didn't just freeze where we were and stay the same, and I understand how it moved backwards. And at the same time, like Margaret said, we lost benefits, we lost cash, we lost money. We're also fighting work, more and more and more, and not that we don't need it, and not that it's not the best thing, but we don't have time, and you're overloading us. And I know you don't mean to do it intentionally, we all want the best for everybody, but there's only so much people can do, and when you're not getting paid, and you have another year experience, everywhere else you go, you work a year, you get an evaluation, if you do well, you move up. We moved backwards. Our salary guide for teachers probably needs to be totally redone, and if a raise isn't in the picture budget-wise, that salary guide, giving us some credit back for the experience we lost, would go a great deal. And I don't know if, Dr., and by the way, good evening, Dr. Mitchell, and congratulations. The 2012-13 salary schedule for teachers, it's kind of, we're so close, and as the paper pointed out a little while back, that Falkir County truly is considered Northern Virginia, both in all those little things that said, well, you're the eighth wealthiest, blah, blah, blah. But Falkir County, after 30 years on this year's salary guide, the 30-year MA is at $77,300, according to this. Now, if you go to Loudon, you only have to teach 29 years to reach the top, and the MA top in, I'm in the wrong county. Oh, well, anyway, I can send you this. The master's at the top is $94,419. And if you go to Prince William, that has a matching 403B in health benefits around power and retirement, you only have to work 26 years, and their MA is at $97,340. I don't think we'll ever get up there right now, but we sure need a little bit of help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we move to reports. Ms. Reardon, I'll start with you.
I do not have a report for you this month.
Alrighty, Ms. Wolf.
I just would like to say, I attended the spelling bee, and it was outstanding. Eileen Bergland did an absolutely wonderful job. Her clear pronunciation and her literary expertise was apparent, and it was, it was really, really fun. And I'm sure everybody's read that Drew Marino from Warrenton Middle School won for the fourth time. But what was really remarkable, Drew Marino's an eighth grader, but there was a fifth grader, is it Karra or Kira?
Kira.
Kira Holland, a fifth grader, and then their third grader, Matt McLaughlin from Coleman, and they were, they were just outstanding, and it was, it was really fun. So thank you for all you guys did. The only other thing I just wanted to announce, and this is something that's in April that I feel really strongly about, is that in April, the hospital, on April 20th, and I'll mention this again, and maybe we can get it announced, on April 20th, the hospital is going to have an unused medical, you bring in your unused meds and drop them off, and they'll destroy them for you, because it's very important that we not flush them down the toilet. And it's also, in our discipline hearings, we find it's important not to leave them in your house. So I'll remind everybody of that, but write it down in your calendars, April 20th, 9 to noon, up at the hospital. So that's it, but thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bland.
Madam Chair, I would like to take just a moment to publicly thank the board of supervisors for their support and approval of funds to continue improvements to Falkir High School. This project continues to be a win-win for the students, parents, faculty, and the citizens of Falkir County as a whole.
That's right.
Okay? The second point for the Personnel Committee, the highlights of the Personnel Committee will actually be discussed here later on. Ms. Downs is going to lead that discussion, so I'm not going to steal it in her thunder. I'll wait until she presents the highlights of the Personnel Committee meeting.
Okay.
For all, okay? All right.
Okay. I'll just mention, from the Building Committee, you will notice over the next five, six weeks, that we will be installing the buzz-in systems in all of our schools, so by the end of February, unless something happens, they will, all 20 schools will have a buzz-in system. So if you go, you better be buzzed, you hit the buzzer, and somebody better ask who you are and show your ID and everything else. I don't know, but we, we will, we are moving forward with the security measures, and that will be phase one. And I think that was about, we were, we're on the way to fixing the water situation.
Yep.
The end is in sight.
In Marshall, and also in Southeastern, Southeastern Elementary School.
Got approved by the planning.
The end is in sight.
Yes.
We never thought that day would come. And I think that was about it from Building Committee?
Well, the fact that the, that the new addition is coming along so well that...
Yep, and, well, and it was in the paper, that some of the students will be moved, some classes will be moving into the new...
I saw it read that.
Yes, yes.
How about that? So we can do some of the performing arts this spring. So that's exciting.
That's really...
Okay, Dr. Mitchell, got anything?
Nothing.
Oh, come on.
Come on up.
Just to say that right now.
Okay. Then financial report, Ms. Cottaw.
Good evening. You have before you the November 30th financial report. It was presented to the Finance Committee on December 12th. This, at this point, we had completed five months, or 42% of the year. In most areas, we are in line with prior years and on track for this year. The one area I do want to point out that seems low is in the school operating fund under federal funds. You can see that we'd only collect at 4.7% as compared to almost 14% last year. It's timing, we received almost $900,000 in January with another $400,000 pending. So in the next couple of reports, you'll see that we've caught up with that again. So just simply timing. Any questions?
Nope.
No wedding? Okay, all right. Thank you. Move to Human Resource Department report, Ms. Downs.
Good evening. The following is a brief summary of the actions in human resources for the past month. Currently, we have five certified vacancies posted, and we have 19.5 classified vacancies. For March, we are scheduling our annual job fair on March 16th at Liberty High School. We hope that you all can be in attendance. We're planning to attract teachers for the upcoming school year. Any questions?
You got that on your calendar, right?
Yes, I do. That would be good.
Well, that's great.
Thank you. Okay, then we move to consent agenda.
Well, I got to get my agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve the following. Minutes of the December 10th school board meeting and the January 7th school board organizational and special meeting, the payment of bills, personnel actions, and the new high school courses, in addition to the religious exemption 011413 dot 1.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board approve the minutes of the December 10th school board meeting and January 7th school board organizational and special meeting, payment of bills, personnel actions, new high school courses, and religious exemption 011413 dot 1. Any discussion?
No.
If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, and the motion carries. And we move to information items, and I believe we're going to start with Dr. Mitchell.
This item concerns Policy 6.2 in Section 1, and it addresses the agenda development. It's a procedural policy, really doesn't affect anything that you currently do, but right now, we have a conflict between our policy and our regulation on the building of an agenda and whether a board member can add an agenda item or delete an agenda item. So this is just to make the regulation and the policy consistent. So there is, in the red line copy, you will see the sentence that needs to come out of the policy. That's basically it.
Questions, anybody? Yeah, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's very straightforward.
Right. Okay, can Ms. Downs, are you, I'm sorry.
Yes. Yeah, I'm good.
Yep. Ms. Downs, National Board Certification, so...
Good evening, again. Following is a request that the school board approve the recommendation, recommended guidelines for continuation of the local supplement paid for National Board Certification, which is $2,000 per year, which that's the cap that they can receive, and also to continue that when they renew their National Board Certification. The individuals that renew would be held to the same standards that new people into the program would be held to, which means it will not be part of their compensable VRS compensation. It would be handled just like a stipend. So tonight, we're putting forth these guidelines to hope that you all can adopt them, and we can move forward with some set standards. Any questions?
Okay, and what do you need...
I do not. We can have it on consent for next month.
Consent.
Okay.
Okay.
We already, I mean, we already worked through this.
No, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
I tried to keep it simple. Did I do this?
Did you really?
I tried.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, then we'll move to school health.
Okay. Our following request is that the school board authorize adjustments in the school nurse pay schedule, effective with the new hires being hired in January, and for the existing incumbents for the 2013-2014 school year. What we are requesting, that school nurses with an RN be regraded from grade 15 to grade 21, and LPNs be graded, regraded from 14 to 18. We believe that this would help us attract and get some highly skilled and retain new hires, since we've had vacancies that have been a challenge. And then again, this would be part of our budget process moving forward to 2013-2014 for the existing employees. Any questions?
No, I, this is...
Ms. Wolf, I'm sure you're going to enjoy having that discussion at the Next Health Advisory Committee meeting.
Yeah.
This is something that's been long in coming. We discussed it at length at our most recent Personnel Meeting, and it, it was just, it got overwhelming support.
Well, their turnover rate has just been so high.
It has, yeah.
Right, yes. Yeah. Okay, no, I totally support this.
I can feel Sally Murray sitting right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, then...
I would request that we move this to action tonight.
Yep. So if there is a motion?
Madam Chair, I will move that the school board move information item 10C, the school health nurse salary scale adjustment, to action item 11A for consideration for approval this evening, and renumber the remaining of the agenda accordingly.
Second. Motion and a second that the school board move information item 10C, school health nurse salary scale adjustment, to action item 11A for consideration for approval this evening, and renumber the remainder of the agenda accordingly. Any discussion, other than this is a long time coming? Yeah. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. And Ms. Downs?
Yes. The next request is for the school board to approve the establishment of two authorized full-time permanent positions that will be supported by the Title I grant allocation. This is an administrative request only. We, Title I funds are already funding these two positions. They've been funded for the last two years. One's an office associate position, and the other is a reading specialist. And by putting this as part of our budget, which just helps us plan and helps us to be able to retain these employees, why the Title I funds can support it. Any questions?
Okay, we're good?
Good, and that can go for next month.
Yes.
Next is, I have a PowerPoint, I think you all have it in front of you, but if...
No, we don't have it.
Or you don't, okay.
No. But we have this.
Do I have to do it? Do I have to do it?
They will.
Okay. Well, good evening tonight. I'm very excited for the many years that you all have been with us. You know that we constantly talk about our payroll and human, lack of payroll and human resources system. We are, we're in desperate need of this system, and this June, the county and the school partnered together funds, so we could go and start to research payroll and human resources software system. December 2012, this last month, we were able to sign a contract with Tyler Technologies to provide us with this software service. And this brings us just a tremendous opportunity to look at our current processes and to consider what changes we need to do to make our processes more efficient. So with this great opportunity for change, we want to evaluate policies and procedures. We want to evaluate the things that we're doing, is, are there better ways? We have a committee that's been working on that. February 20 of 2013, I guess in a month, we will have our committee implementation and kickoff. Munis will come and have a project manager. Some of the things that we want to do differently is, you know, the possibility of allowing employees to have two jobs, if you all would like to go back to that. A system that can handle complex employee groups would be able to do weighted averages, which would be able to allow us to have one employee serve two jobs. Also, the elimination of wait period for overtime or miscellaneous pay. Currently, we do sometimes have to delay a month before people get their overtime pay. And also, we are thinking, requesting an implementation of a biweekly pay practice for all school employees. Implementation of a new human resources...
They don't get paid every two weeks?
So we talked about streamlining payroll process. What does that mean? Well, one would be, currently, we have monthly paid employees as well as biweekly employees. So we develop a biweekly schedule for all employees. We would develop a lag in the payroll process, because that would ensure that we pay accurately. Currently, we pay current to date for even our, for our monthlies, but if we had a lag pay, then we would be able to improve our manual adjustments. Leave accrual would be taken into account, as well as miscellaneous pay would be paid the same with lag pay. We would want to standardize our pay practices within the school division. As you all may know, in Transportation Department moved to biweekly pay in 2010, and it was believed that we would continue to roll this out over time, but that process did not continue. So we stopped with Transportation. Reason we're here tonight is the Code of Virginia states that the School Board must implement the pay practice for the school division. So you all would make the ultimate decision whether we should go biweekly pay practice. So that's why we're here. What does biweekly mean? Biweekly means you're paid 26 times per year. You're paid every other Friday, which is different from semi-monthly, which is just two times a month. When you're paid biweekly, you would have two pays per year, or two times a year, you'd have three paychecks in one month, and those paychecks would not have deductions. So it would kind of be like a little added pay period. There are many positive impacts of biweekly pay practice. One is the reduction of manual adjustments. Currently, we do a lot of manual adjustments. If there are errors, sometimes we have to wait till next month to correct. So there would be a positive impact to employees, because their pays with the lag would be, there would be elimination of as many manual adjustments as we currently do. Up-to-date leave balances, currently, we have to wait a month after payroll's run to find out what your leave balance is, so you would be able to see that in more accurate time. Employees would be paid 26 times versus 12. No longer need for new teacher advances, because currently, our new teachers have to wait six weeks to be paid, but they would only have to work the first four weeks, so they'd be paid the second week in September versus waiting to the end of September. And then creating a lag pay does several things. It assists in recovering funds. So we do have some times when people leave our system, and we do not find out about it quick enough, and so we have to go work with those employees to make repayments. Or also, if people are paid incorrectly, working with them to refund the differences. This will not impact 10- or 11-month employees, because currently, 10- and 11-month employees are already stretched out over 12 months. So it would just be a change of them receiving their paychecks biweekly versus monthly. And then it would have packed 283 12-month employees, and because currently, we would have to impact them with the lags, there would be a time between their last monthly and biweekly pay that could be a little longer.
Just to start.
Just to start.
Just a one time.
Just a one time, yep. Potential concerns, anytime you change a, do something that's different than the culture, it can be difficult. While annual salaries remain the same, your monthly pay does vary, and then 12-month employees would have to budget for the one-time lag in pay. So there's some potential concerns. Other culture changes that we've had that were difficult, direct deposit was very, was an obstacle to overcome, then moving to e-stubs, where people did not get paper copies, electronic W-2s, we're no longer getting printed paper of that. And then county employees did move from monthly to biweekly in 2002, and that was also, I was here during that time, that was a communication strategy we had to have, because that was also a change. We always show what other surrounding school divisions are doing, so this grid just shows you the monthly and the semi-monthly and the biweekly pay that our neighbors currently do. And then finally, implementation proposal. Tonight, I'm just putting forward as information, but effective July 1, 2013, we would like all new hires coming into Faukeer County Public Schools to be paid biweekly. We also would propose that 10- and 11-month employees also begin the contract year biweekly. In addition, begin communicating with 12-month employees with sufficient time to allow for January 2014 implementation for 12-month employees. And then finally, we would offer support and training for any employee that needed, but especially 12-month employees, so if we could help them budget, we have financial management as well as Valid could help them plan for the one-time lag. And then finally, why is this important? Why would we want to move forward with this? One, it's going to streamline the payroll process. Currently, the payroll process is very complex. We run many different payrolls, many different scenarios, and this would begin to streamline where everyone was on one biweekly. Also, we would begin to decrease our manual processes. One of the great things about this system is it's a time and attendance system as well, so it will help, currently, we have what's called a blue timesheet. That wouldn't be in existence anymore. It'd be a computer-based login, log-out, which would help calculate time. So that's less manual, it's more automatic. Also, accurate reporting of payroll funding sources. Currently, it's hard for us to track the different sources, so this system is going to allow us to be able to run reports and find out what grants or fundings different employees are under. And also, it's going to be accurate and quick pay for employees. There is a employee self-service, where employees can go and check out their leave balances, check out their pay, check out where their leave request is, because currently, everything's in paper. So there's really some great things that are going to be coming down the pike that we'll keep informing you all about and bringing information forward. Any questions this evening?
You did say, when Transportation went to biweekly, there was an initial?
Yeah, we, several times over the years, had done a vote to see how they felt about it, and finally, it was over more than half wanted to go biweekly. So there were a few still that did not, you know, weren't ready for it, but after that first pay, we didn't hear much at all, so it was...
So it's just the initial lag?
It's changing, because, you know, you have monthly pay, and then biweekly, it is getting a different, I mean, it's half the amount you usually get. So it's going to be changing how you budget your bills, changing how, you know, handle your finances at home.
Now, you mentioned that this might be an opportunity for us to consider people holding down two jobs. I don't understand why that brings that, because...
Well, currently, we, one of the reasons we made this business decision not to allow two jobs is because we didn't have the ability to track that. We didn't have the ability for a system to do the weighted averages, because under FLSA, if you work over 40 hours, but there are two different job rates, you have to do a balanced average, and that was not able. So this system, we'd be able to have a workflow to be able to track and do the weighted average.
It's two jobs with Faukeer County schools.
Yes, two jobs with Faukeer County Public Schools, yes.
Right. But that, and that would prevent the overtime issue that we were having? See, that's what I thought it was.
Well, I mean, we may still be paying more money for someone who has two jobs, but we would be able to track it and pay them accurately under the law. One of the things was, we wouldn't, we didn't have the capabilities to do the weighted averages and track it.
Okay, so it really doesn't, okay.
Yeah, we still have it. There's still the same issue involved.
Yeah, all right, okay. That's what I thought. I didn't understand it. Okay, great.
Okay?
I would just like to make a comment. We have been trying to get an enhanced payroll system since I've been on the board, and that's been what, six or seven, seven years now, and we have tried, believe me. And we went through this the other, the other day, last week. I mean, I was just so enthused about the fact that we now have something that will work very well, is integrated, and it is widely accepted. It's a great enhancement to what we have.
Yeah, we're very excited.
We should be.
Yeah, definitely.
Be careful, though, because now I have to do my own time at the federal government. So with that, we...
Didn't mean with some things.
Well, you know, because you know how you said you can go into the system? Well, now we have to validate and put our time in, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Borne, middle school redistricting.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Mitchell. Tonight, I wanted to bring forth the middle school redistricting issue that we've been talking about for several years now. You've expressed concerns about enrollment at three of our five middle schools. I've given to you in your package tonight, the enrollment at those middle schools, and three of them, Auburn, Cedar Lee, and Warrington, are exceeding, are at or exceeding capacity. And we typically consider capacity, that a school has reached its capacity when it's at 95%. And so three of the schools are exceeding 95% capacity. From a, so tonight, I'm requesting your direction on moving forward with middle school redistricting to be effective for next school year, if that's what you decide to do ultimately. We would need to begin very soon the process. I've provided you a tentative schedule that's outlined in your package tonight, and am suggesting that you add middle school redistricting for more discussion at a work session to provide you that opportunity to talk about various options. At that time, staff would provide you with a baseline redistricting plan that you could use to begin your discussions, and the tentative schedule provides you time that would give you an opportunity during January and February to review and adjust the boundary lines if you decide to do that, as well as to go to each of the middle schools and meet with the parents there and discuss the plan and options. And then it also allows time for you to hold a public hearing after you've had a chance to speak with each of the school communities that might be impacted by the plan. So I'm seeking your direction tonight on whether to add this to the January 28th agenda.
The 28th agenda?
Yes. Sounds great.
In that case, I would suggest that we have a venue that's going to be larger than what we have here, perhaps.
Or the work session larger than the conference room.
Right. Yeah, larger than a work session.
Yeah.
Perhaps one of the middle schools.
You want to check with the middle schools before we...
We'll check availability then and send out that information.
Okay. I think probably better.
Yep. Sounds great. Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that's all the information. So we move to action items.
Okay.
Cheryl's getting there.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
I got it up. I move that the School Board authorize adjustments to the school nurse pay schedule, effective immediately for new hires for the 2012-13 school year and effective in 2013-14 school year for current employees.
Second?
Second, absolutely.
Motion and a second, that the School Board authorize adjustments to the school nurse pay schedule, effective immediately for new hires for the 2012-2013 school year and effective in the 2013-2014 school year for current employees. Any discussion?
This is for Pam Trude. Pam, if you're watching and listening to this, I know you are quite happy. Congratulations.
There's going to be a lot of people.
This hopefully will help that problem.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, and the motion carries. Anything else to come before some open session?
No.
If not, then...
I move that the School Board convenes a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing[1770.16]